I'm a host. You took the invitation already, or you took? Ah, what? That's good, I think.
I'm a host.
Let me go ahead and edit this code.
You took the invitation already, or you took? Ah, what's that? That's good, I think.
Okay. I think we're good now, guys. I think we are good, okay? We must have been a lot of but not a lot of them. Completely. We can turn this off. Well, no more wasting time on the social media. Because everything is working. I just need to adjust my. And all over here, channel. Okay, good, it's working. Well, the. How am I learning the? I was passing the cup again, but I'm not a big gamer. The harm museum, okay? And I want to. I'm a casual like. Coronavirus. Yep, the snow last week, the whole day, the one that could be up. What's the scandal? When I said, what's that? So how do you get that? Okay, guys, thanks very much for joining in the study session today. I want to show you guys how to work with. I think I already mentioned that. Let me share my screen again. So these are the guys, okay? I don't know if you guys can see my screen right now. All right. How much it that they are, so here's what we're gonna do. They're like, all them is SS, it's the one that the tablet is a promise table is later, okay? The table there. My son, I'm brother, database, the one I must. Well, so I'm a raw PHP number, of course, it's a class, my last, I shut them us. All the things, class, I'm sure, like in. Some like the way. Primitive the Yolun, the master, the cost, I'm a. The Michael, okay? So we're not wasting any more time, so let's jump back on action. All right, my name is, my name is, well, I had a, they make my house of care, man. My tutor, I'm bored. Send Kelly for tutorial, my house, new column, and there. Let's call this money, you to put my mother, okay? Yeah, like, I'm getting a crime, it's bringing children, it's my class. We're gonna do a couple of things, direct, which I'm the CSS here. He risk it, we're gonna open up a PHP file, we'll call this index. It's fantastic. All right, he says, let's not get. She not stop shit, you're at get, Thomas, but no, Thomas, which I'm at, Thomas, this style, this. Okay. He index, I can, I was. We're good, yes. Obviously, it's not a good one, I must. Welcome to study session. The second, my son, I'm a bull, busy, I'm a monkey, my mom, I'm a. But CSS, none. This shop library is not a problem. And how about, well, the mission is bit, but I am the business. CSS, we're not, I'm a little, I was a. Man, I'm a young boy. But what I do. CSS. Style. Nice, okay? And. But each of us, Thomas, we have this house of. Box model, not a good, Thomas, so I'm gonna open up a diff. First thing I'm gonna do is, let's go give up some type of project or something. And. You know how the floor look? With the south, for a sec. Okay, I'm this. I'm gonna give a body, something like my ground color. Let's give. If I can drop one of these. Blue. Very good, and the project is going to be this. I'm gonna start with. Thousand, maybe two, 1200 pixel. I'm gonna give 600 pixel from now. But one thing I wanna do is. I wanna set the all the elements. Margin and padding. Your pixel. For the pixel. Okay, and then also. I wanna give HTML. So now, and body. Hit the width, under 3%. Oh, what happened there? Under 3%. Make it. And then also, I will put the box sizing, the content box. Okay, now. Let's give the background color. Maybe white. I'm gonna put the border, one pixel solid. Go for white. You guys already familiar with the box system, so. Now, let's go ahead and open up our site. In the browser. Hang on a second, let me turn off my phone. Okay. All right, so we have that, I think mostly, I'm gonna be working here. If you don't mind, I'm gonna put this side by side. Okay? And then next thing I wanna do is. I will set up my my header. So let's call this class. My header, and here. I'd like to put some type of a H4, H3, maybe, I would just say. Welcome to my study session. Now, next thing we want to do is, we're gonna display the data here. For that, I'm gonna be using the table. Thank you guys, not that, know that already, so class. My table, the. Now. What is it exactly I'm trying to build? So let me build the, like. The sample, like a table layout first, so we're gonna be using the TR. CD, so inside, I'm gonna use, bring some data. For database, so let me connect to my local database. And then let's see what database we're gonna be using. I got a lot of them out there. So I was thinking, we're gonna be able to use the world news. We got a lot of them here. Okay, so let's use the world news and. Let's make it searchable and let's give the our customers. Way to look for news or stay up to date. So eventually, hopefully, then I'll show you guys how to. Subscribe for email notifications or news notifications. For example, in this case, let's say you're looking for. Something related, like a kind of a wireless related or something. Any keyword you're looking for. You wanna, you wanna hear about without looking for, without going to the internet. You'll get notified, you're gonna get email or you're gonna get SMS, basically, so. I can show you that later on, okay? But for now, let's focus on building the interface. So I'm gonna use the world news, that is going to be my. Basically, my database. So. What happened to my? Push it down, okay? So I'm gonna need the ID, author, title, description, and. This is not my camera. There we go. Okay. So I'm gonna need the title, the author, title and description, so how do we do this? Let's put this right here. So I'm gonna say. Author, right? Then we will say title. And we'll say description. Okay, and what else do we need from the news? Anything that you're interested in? Oh, okay, so we're looking for the image as well and URL, okay? So we need the image as well. Let's go ahead, put that image here. And how about URL? Of course, we need the source name, right? Source name. And then, of course, source name is going to be here. Source, where the news is coming from, right? And let's see what else we have going on, the results. Active, not active, publish that, but okay. Now, all I have to do is just copy these. Because this is one is gonna be in the collection, which is a for loop. And then I can just convert them to TH. Because these are all gonna be. Basically. Header for the table. See, next thing we're gonna do is we're gonna give the class table. And table border. Let's see how it looks right now. Okay, so. I would say I'm gonna go ahead, design this with CSS now, I'm ready to go. Let's have to put this up. And we are styling this my header, let's make it nicer. I'm gonna put this text align center. Font size, let's make it. 180%. On family, I think I'm gonna go with. American type writer. And color, let's go with something. I don't know, we'll, we'll figure it out, which one's gonna be. Okay? And also. I wanna give some padding around, let's say five pixel. Let's make the weight. Bolder. Okay, so. Instead of study session, so we're gonna be saying world news. I mean, that's, I think it's the best description, don't you think? So we can just say. This. World news. Yeah. The latest world news, wonderful. Now. Things thing I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go ahead, design the the header. Make a nice, okay, so I can come back and say. TH. Or if I want to do the entire TR, first TR, I can just say first child. Give them background color. Let's see, I'm gonna back that on again. You know what, let's go with something drastic, like full different color. Something like the reddish. Because now you have the blue background, and I think is a red, it'll kind of stand out. It's gonna look nice, and then we can just give a color. Why, but it won't be white, it'll be like something. Like that, let's try that. Okay, so far, so good. I think. It can be better, but that's okay for now. So the ID is supposed to go there, okay? So next thing I wanna do is, I'm gonna work with the image, so let's pick. Any image for now. That image is gonna go here. Just take the any image for now, let's say force. Dot, 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 let's see if I can go all the way. Some type of image, model. Okay, we're still kind of far. Trying to find the any image, but I guess we can define it online, no problem. You say logo. Okay, just a news longer for now. So, and then we'll replace that with. Something. No, it's a just for now, box maybe. Doesn't matter, okay? Now, all we need to do is just replace this inside the URL right here. Oh, no, that's not what we want. That's not what we want. We need the, not the data content. Because that's a 64 encoded, we don't want that, we want, we just want it to go out like that, the basic. So obviously, it's gonna go big now, that's what CSS is for, to. Make it style. Okay, it's too big, so what I'm gonna need is, let's go with class immediately, we'll just give them. News, a little longer, for example, okay? Copy that, go to CSS. Let's give a width. Let's start with small, 90 pixel. I think it's fine, let me check it out. Yeah, it is too small. Let me make that a little bit bigger. Yeah, something like that. It's fine, under 20, it's fine. Under 20. And. That would be okay. Check it out. Be image. You know what, I'm gonna give a class. IMG TD right here. And then I don't have to worry about giving class here, so watch. So I can kill two birds with one stone. So now watch, I'm gonna show you what I'm doing, so I give it a class to to that particular TD. Because. Now I can just copy this guy. And then you, I am do here. Now, at the same time, I can say text align center. All right, and then on an image, I can just give a border. Let's give a two pixel double. I'm gonna give a. For everyone, I won't give same, hang on one second, I'm getting a phone call. So like then, my neighbor just walked in, giving me some news. Mails, letters, mails and some stuff, so. Okay, that's it, that's it. We have this double, what we decided the background, other border color. Let's stay consistent with this. And if you always wanna give like five. That way, it adds some frame around the image. And that way, it's gonna stay consistent, there we go. All right, wonderful, so we're gonna continue. With this, okay? So give me one second. All right, I apologize. Okay, where we are? We are doing here, let's see. And I think that's about it, so only thing I have to build is the search. Somewhere input here, so let's do that right away, and then we just hook it up to a database, okay? And I'm sure most of you are looking for that particular piece, right? You wanna learn and you are excited how to connect to the database, so. Let's get to it, I'll say my search or something like that, or new search. Right here. And I wanna put. You know what, if I do this, let me go ahead, design that. New search. If you guys done already, so you can just close all of them. Let me give a background color, so that I can see. Where we are. And then we give a width, I don't have to do the width, because by default, it's already 100%. But it's easy, so easy for me, okay? Let's see, let's do the text align right, so I don't have to do the float. It's easy for me. I think that's about it, okay? Next thing I'm gonna add is the form. And you guys already familiar with the HTML form, right? And right here, I will just say. Or just say. Put a label if you like, I can just say search. Okay? And then next thing you want is going to be input. Oops. Input, here, we're gonna give a type, it's going to be text. Name, we're gonna give a keyword. Obviously, we're gonna give the placeholder, let's say your keyword. Name, keyword, placeholder, and. Yeah, that's about it. Nothing more. And if we want, we can make this required. Obviously, if you want to sort something, obviously, you have to. Enter some keyword. Now, the finally, we can just hit the button and we can just say. Go. I can go into submit. And let's take a look, take a look at it, see how it looks. All right, what happened to my go button? That is too. Right, I don't know, let me just check, maybe I have to move. My form. Let's give a. Little bit of margin. My form, how about that? So we're gonna give a form. I'm going to give a margin, overall margin is five pixel. But I'm gonna give the margin right is 10 pixel. And let's see what happened there, okay? So that kind of push it out a little bit. And. Another thing I wanna do is, I'm gonna give a class to my button, I'll just give BTN. BTN, let's say successful. And then I will also do some stuff with my label. Label. Let's go to weight is some bold. Okay, give me a second, make sure that. Okay. All right. It looks good, right? Let's see. Yeah, so all I need to do is, I'm gonna adjust my input. Makes make sure it looks nice, right? Let's do that. I'll just copy the same thing, and then what I'll do is, instead of. Label, we'll just do that. And I think is the width, this is fine, but I can also adjust the width, let's go to 100 pixel. Height, I'm gonna start with 50 pixel, I know it's a little kind of wider. And then let's go with the border is none. But I still wanna give a border. One pixel solid. Let's go black all the way. And let's go the border radius 10 pixel. I know it's gonna look a little out of whack, but. Yeah, that is horrible, but that's what we're gonna do, adjusting. I guess the border none, it doesn't exist, we don't need that. So let's go adjust the height first. Okay, this is fine for the height. I can go a little bit bigger right here, longer, and height also. You guys see my screen, right? So it's easy to adjust. Right? All right, this is fine, 291 by 241, so 291. By 41, let's leave that, and then. Let's give a little bit of inside padding, let's say five pixel. You know what else I'm gonna bring is, I'm gonna bring my. Background image. URL. And then. For the URL, I'm gonna have to go all the way. So let's say dot, 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 IMG, that search icon. And then, and just leave there for now. Then we're gonna say background repeat, no repeat. Background size, let's wait, go with the 20 pixel to 100 pixel, let's see what happened there. Not, we'll adjust it again. Okay, so it's not bad at all, we're gonna come back. And let's adjust that 20 pixel. Which is good, right over here. And. Maybe just go all the way, okay? Very good, 50 by 100, 50 by 100, so let's update 50 by 100. Now, another thing I wanna do is, I'm gonna copy this. And right here, I can just call this placeholder. I wanna give padding to right, I'm gonna add the 20 pixel. Because I need to move my keywords that way. Actually, is that gonna be left, sorry, that's. It's gonna be left, not the right, that should be. There we go, we're gonna need a little bit more, how about we give them 40? Let's see. Oh, beautiful, so now, as you can see. Without touching the hourglass. You are able to basically write, so also, I'm gonna put padding. Left, so anytime somebody wants to type. Make sure then I'm typing on top of the hourglass, let's try that. Oh, we send it more. Let's go with 45. Let's see what happened there. Okay, so now we can see, if somebody wants to type, we can type it here. And obviously, we'll just give them a color, some type of a. A little bit darker, so I don't wanna get that all the attention on the keyword. So this is fine, as you can see, all right? Good. By the way, label, it has to be a little bigger, so I will just say font size. I'm gonna make it 130%. Just like 30% a little bit. Yeah. I know. My screen doesn't look as good as you guys expecting, but let's continue, okay? Now, what's gonna happen is, when we search some type of news, whatever, so. I wanna be able, basically, look it up here, my search should work. So far, you with me, guys, everybody good? Okay, and then we might not have enough time for pagination, but I think the next. Item that we're gonna be working on is the pagination, for now, let's do that. Okay, by the way, I just wanna put some emphasis on the form. You'll notice that I left method intentionally, like blank, maybe space, I didn't mention anything. Let's say if you are using a post method, we know the difference between get and post, right? So you have to put that, but if you, let's say, if you're putting it, if you're using the get method, then you don't need to mention that, this form will automatically take care of that. But it's good, kind of having a good habit, if you wanna do that, but if not, I won't worry about that, it's not gonna be. Deal breaker. But if not, I won't worry about that, it's not gonna be uh, a deal breaker. Okay, so we are good guys, uh, so far, I will just close this TR, this is the important part for my database manipulation, which is, I'm gonna bring, I'm fetching the data, okay? And then, uh, yeah, it's gonna look good. Yeah, so give me one second, let me grab my glass of water and... Okay. Alright, ready? That's good. End of, also see my side of us. Well, we're there. This was the game of the, we're gonna, okay, well, that's it, so um... Killing in the success, I'm bullish, I think we don't have to worry about anything here. But let's make our code nicer, so let's format it a little bit. In, in the, in the patient again, what about? So but automatically, it was a trial, like, make it better. I thought it was, you have to go on your office space level, so.
It's what that one person will ruin everything for ninety nine people. Because of the one person, you basically you're saying, I'm sorry, guys, I'm gonna have to check your user data. Do you see what I'm saying? So one person is ruining our lives. So one way we can protect ourselves is we can enforce some type of a validation on both on the front end and the back end. Does that make sense? So that's what I'm gonna do right now. Uh, if you don't enforce the validation, and I'm gonna show you the consequence, what's gonna happen? Let's say that you didn't enforce any validation. Let's see if we can demonstrate that. And in this case, uh, I just say Trump, it'll show up here. Okay, now let's say if someone wants to enter something like they're not supposed to. You may ask, like, what? Oh, say like a JavaScript, uh, some type of JavaScript, uh, code. So let's say, uh, I wanna pass script. Close the script. Now in here, I'm gonna throw some alert. Okay? And then here, I'm gonna just say hello there. Let's see what happened there. So if I go ahead, go. Oh, my God, what is happening? Look at that. I was able to basically manipulate and inject my code. And and now watch what's gonna happen. If someone really wants to hijack your form, it's called form phishing. And that's exactly I'm gonna do. So watch, I'm gonna say alert. Now, do you know what? Uh, let's start with this. This is what I'm gonna do. Now, if I'm gonna go ahead, enter that, I'm gonna say document location. I want to be redirected to some other pages. How? Now watch. Let's say I wanna go to HTTP. Uh, I'm gonna go to Google. So I'm gonna go ahead. As soon as I click go. Go. Excuse me. God damn. As soon as I click on go, anyone opens up this page, guess what? They're gonna go to thinking, thinking, thinking. And now what? All I did was a boom. What? What happened there? Look at that. But now I am hacked. How? Watch. Okay, so now what? I'm just hacking from right here, from the form. Your site has been hacked. Look. Now, I can go back to my site. It keeps redirecting to Google. So here's what we're gonna do to protect. Okay, so I'm gonna keep that script right there in the input. Uh, before I do that, PHP has a very simple functionality. Okay, uh, it's called strip tags. What's strip tag does? Uh, the function name itself basically describing stripping the tags means anything you put in there like script. Anything like this code, I'll strip it. Now watch what's gonna happen now. So if I go ahead, click OK or go. Boom. Now you see everything is stripped. All you see is the text. And then we just prevented a simple, uh, unnecessary stupid hacking. Someone, if they get hold of it, they can just test your site, and then they'll cause you lots of trouble. Okay? All right, that's the first lesson. Um, next thing I wanna do. That's it. I wanna go ahead, make a connection to the database. Oh, by the way, another thing I need to do is, uh, what if somebody wants to enter something like long, long text? How do we defend ourselves from that? How do we do that? So second thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna say keyword. I'll just use the substring. Okay, and then I'll put the keyword again. Um, let's try five first, and let's see what happened there. Start five, and then just go ahead. Cut it off. That means, uh, you count one, two, three, four, five, and then everything else, we just kind of forget what kind of cut it off. Okay? Now what's what's gonna happen? So I'm gonna say keyword. What uh, what happened if I enter longer than five words? I'm gonna say Uzbekistan, that's longer than five. Yep, um, oh, what happened there? Oh, it's getting the last one. I'm sorry about that. So I'm gonna have to put five. So let me start from the zero. Uh, now, uh, count five. So start from the zero. U Z U Z B E K five. Okay? If that's what what I want, then I have to mention that. So in this case, let's be twenty five is the longest. I'm okay with that. As long as people not entering. They don't go crazy, uh, but maybe the some, some people may copy and paste. And if they accidentally copy and paste like entire like a paragraph, like a long, long characters. Uh, you need to be ready to handle that as well. Does that make sense? Okay. So how we doing so far? Uh, let's see. Oh. We are live on that, so that way I don't have to record. That's great. Okay. Am I asking? Everybody okay here, guys?
Yes.
Okay, so. Now, well, in the killing, in the, uh, business. Ah, Apple juice. Man. Um, database class. First thing is, um, step one. I'm gonna go ahead, uh, make it, uh, establish connection with, uh, database, which is going to be us MySQL. MySQL database, okay? Uh, killing through that. So for that, I'm gonna be creating a, a, a new variable called MySQL. Okay? Uh, it's like a class. We say new MySQL I. Now, first argument, it takes that the database, uh, the host name, which is a URL, either one, two, seven, zero, zero, one or local host. So local host is equal to one, two, zero, zero, I mean, one, two, seven dot zero dot zero dot one. I think we already know that already, right? And the next thing I'm gonna put is the password is still the same. Uh, for the database, I'll just use the DBQ. Okay, now, um, that's about it. And now what we're gonna do. Let's go ahead, check it, see if, uh, my database is working. If I'm connected, you will see. I just put the pray here. Uh, I'm gonna say print. Uh, maybe we could just go to Word dump. You guys are already familiar with the word dump. Now, I'm gonna say, now, as soon as you do that, this is like a class, it'll give you like, um, different attributes and the methods. Uh, so in this case, I'm gonna say connect error number. So if everything checks out, okay, if if we're able to establish connection to database successfully, then I should see zero error message. Okay, that means it's good. We're connected to the database. Now, what happened if you don't? So let's say I'm put a uh, some username that doesn't exist. Now you should see, uh, warning. It's not a title error, it's just a warning. It's basically saying, uh, access denied for user. Uh, local host database DBQ, blah, blah, blah. Okay? So let's go back to the root. Um. Now. Remember one thing, connecting to database is costly. This is where, if you're familiar with the AWS services, uh, if you have a hosting anywhere. Most, most of the hosting companies, they make money off of your connections. Off of the, uh, database, uh, uh, connection, uh, using the resources. So the golden rule is number one is try to avoid unnecessary connections. So only connect to the database if it's necessary. If you're ready, got the keyword ready, and your users are ready, and your application is ready to either insert or update or delete or maybe select. Even that, try to take care of it with one connection, but couple of things. You don't wanna be connecting every time to the database. Okay? So try to make that less, less, uh, how to say, like, seldom, not often. Does that make sense? Okay. So for that, I'm going to do is, um, I'm gonna wrap it up with the if statement. I wanna say, hey, if the keyword is, for example, uh, good to go, right? Then I want to make that establishment for the database. So I would say if, let's put the keyword for now. And then we'll wrap it up with this. Now, what hap- what happens if you don't pass the, uh, keyword? Is this gonna connect to the database? Oh, shouldn't. I mean, that's the goal. Okay, so index keyword, what is the line number? Let's check it out. What, uh, we are getting? Line number. Line number two. Line number two, keyword. All right, so we're gonna have to do one more cleanup. So what I'm gonna do is I will just come back here. Okay, and then I'll just put coalition, like kind of, uh, uh, call this operator. It's basically say, if the keyword parameter, global parameter does not exist, then go ahead, use the null. Okay, go ahead, use the null. And then I can just use the keyword here since I already have the keyword. Let's check it out. I'm gonna go ahead. Okay, and that error disappeared. So it's gone. And at the same time, uh, step one right here has not been executed because the keyword is empty. But you can also say empty like that, right? And then you put the not empty, which is the, uh, the bang sign. Boom. So if you do that, and you should see the same result. If the keyword is not empty, then go ahead, establish connection to the database. Okay, we're good so far? All right, that's it. Uh, so we're good on this. Next thing I'm gonna do is, even if we, uh, already inside of the if statement, and we're trying to connect. How do we capture the error message? So let's go ahead, stop execution. Uh, stop the, um, the, the server from executing as soon as we find out there's an error message with, uh, database. So I'm gonna say if, uh, dollar sign MySQL. Uh, connect error, let's say if, uh, greater than, uh, zero. Uh, now what are we gonna say here? So we can just basically say, um, yeah, we'll just, we'll just edit that out. Or there's another method you can call is MySQL underscore connect. Connect, and we can just say error number, which is error on like that. Okay? And then we can just say, um, I don't know what we're gonna say. We can just exit out immediately. We can just say echo. Uh, error, we can just say, sorry. Uh, we are having uh, a connection issue. Something like that, and immediately we exit. Does that make sense? All right, so that is our way to saying we're gonna handle that error message nicely. Okay, so, uh, now what we're gonna do next is, uh, we're gonna create our SQL. This is our SQL statement. Uh, I think the other day I kind of gave you guys a SQL one on one. And this is where, uh, your knowledge from a previous class is gonna come very, very handy. And I'm sure you guys remember that. Uh, select like crud, like C R U D, C for create, R for read, U for update, D for delete. Okay, so in this case, we're gonna be using the read, which is the select. All right, uh, we'll just say, uh, that's select in the capital, so that way we know the difference between, uh, regular keyword from a SQL keyword. And then in this case, I'm bringing up a world underscore news. I just wanna make sure that I am, uh, bringing up the right table, which is the world news right here. So now, we're gonna create a result. Okay, we're gonna create a result, not assign my sequel. And then it will just say query. And then you can just call the, uh, SQL command right here. Okay? Now. Well, let's see what's gonna happen. This is good. This is perfect. Uh, let's check it out, see our, um, thing is working. Um. Everything is fine, which, um, roll now, there's a roll now here. Okay, number, let's try this. So this is gonna be good. And we'll come back and we'll just check it out. If ever it goes successfully, uh, then we should see, oh, by the way, we did not enter anything, so we have to enter another executed database. Wonderful. That is beautiful. Everything is good. Now, um, I'm good to go. I can just close my PHP file here. Make it nicer. You guys understand this code. Now, I'm gonna come back. I'm gonna come back here, uh, then I have to do one more thing on the bottom right here. Create another PHP. Okay? And this is where I'm gonna be using the MySQL. And then I have to close my database connection. And you guys that already know that. So let's see. Result. Same thing with close. Okay, and then, uh, let's check it out. Make sure it's working. Fantastic. Good. Oh, another thing I'm gonna do is, uh, in the my search input, as you can see, uh, for some reason, I'm not storing my keyword that I'm, I, I just looked for. So let's go ahead, put that up there as well. Excuse me. Uh, for that, uh, I'll come back to my input and just say value. And then, uh, PHP, as this is a short code right here, and then you can just say keyword. Now, when you come back and refresh, I think you should see keyword in there. Wonderful, right? Good. So that's what we're looking for, Trump. So if you're looking for Uzbekistan, then you should see. Great. Now, uh, next thing I'm gonna do is I will be doing my, uh, my for loop right over here. And what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna open up the PHP. And we can just say while, we can use the while. And then I can just say rows, right? If you just say row, no, uh, row is fine, or we can just give records, or I don't know. Well, we get one of college. We can say records, and right here, we just say result. And let's say result, we'll just say fetch row, or we can just say fetch. Fetch row associated. Uh, so I'm gonna grab this right here. In order for me to see code, uh, it's better if I do this right here. So if I say, and then we can just copy that in HTML. It's not recognizing the code. Okay? So we just say, um, we'll just say the while, and then records equal to, uh, results. And then right here, we can just say fit associate. We're gonna, we're gonna grab the data by, by the name of the columns, not by ID. Does that make sense? And now that I have the names and stuff, okay? Copy that. All you have to do is copy this whole entire thing. Come back here. And just do this. Okay, wonderful. Now, as you can see, we got that going. Result is good. And let's remove this guy. And, uh, I think that should work. Let's try that. I go ahead, refresh. Okay, ta, 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 ta. All of them are coming back. So we're just genetically right now displaying. So what I'm gonna do now, I'm gonna start building it. So first thing that is first, as you can see, this white thing is going on right here, the background. And that is our project. So what we do, go to styles, go to project, and then adjust this height to auto. So that way, uh, our background follows all the way to the bottom. Okay, as you can see, all the news here. But obviously, not gonna see all the news here, uh, because right now, there's no search, there's no nothing. Okay? Okay, so. Now, what I'm going to do is I'm gonna start hooking up, uh, the data here. So for source. So this is what we're gonna be doing. Uh, I will just say records. Now, you know what? We can just go record. Actually, record is fine, because it's gonna be singular anyway. Record. Let's see, records, and we can just say, since it's already converted to array, we'll just say ID. What was the name here? Source name, right? Name. So let me go ahead, check the, the database column names. Source name. Okay. All right, let's check it out, see what happens there. Uh, if everything good, then source name will actually change it. Okay, so as you can see, it's sort of coming up. Uh, I can see Fox News, Al Jazeera, US Today, USA, The Huffington Post, and so on, so on. Okay? That's good. Now, let's go ahead and hook it up, uh, our images. Uh, before we do that, how about we hook it up our, uh, the form? How do we do that? So we'll go back to the DB functions here, and then right over here, we can just say where. Uh, for now, we'll just look for that keyword is in the title. Okay? Where title, we can say like. And then, uh, put that, uh, and wildcards, and then inside, you can just put keyword. Does that make sense? I wanna make sure that I limit this to, uh, fifty for now. And then, then we'll talk about that later. So let's say I'm looking for uh, Trump keyword. Okay, and if I search it. Okay, that's fifty right here. So how about we kind of make it smaller? Uh, I just wanna display only five of them right now. Okay, only five, uh, so that we can fix it. Okay, next one, uh, I'm gonna, um, hook it up is author. Now, all I have to do is just copy this guy. And this is going to be ID, obviously. And this is going to be author. And this is going to be title. This is going to be description. Some, some of the columns may get bigger, but, uh, just watch out. And then for a URL, uh, it's going to be URL. Okay, now, next thing we're gonna bring it up is the URL, uh, to image. It says where is the URL to image? One second. Okay, URL to image. Got it. So it's kind of a camel case, right? Now, for that, I'll just grab this guy. And then, um, right over here. Just drop it here. And boom, boom, boom. So that means that if image does not exist, then I want you to go ahead put up, uh, this. A URL to, is that what it is? URL to image. Okay, if that source does not contain any images, doesn't contain any image, then I want you to use these as a backup. I don't want that any empty, uh, you know, I'm talking my way. So source and that. Okay. I think it looks good. Let's check it out. If not, then we can just go ahead. Refresh. Now it's gonna get like a lot, lot, larger. Oh, whoa, that's look at that. Well, it's coming along. Now, we're gonna have to fix the it's good. Well, we're gonna have to fix the URL, so I know how to fix that. So let's go ahead and do that. Uh, for the URL, I'm gonna go. Um. Let's bring up, uh, our font awesome. That's the CSS. Uh, kind of a, uh, well, uh, graph, graphic libraries. So we will do, uh, font. Awesome. Then we're gonna just say CSS, all that CSS. I think that is pretty much it. And if you're curious where font awesome is, is right here. And then I'm looking up the, uh, CSS inside, and then there is all that CSS. Okay? Font awesome, CSS, and font awesome. Okay. Let's create a magic. So for the URL, um, that's what I'm gonna do. I wanna create an I. Okay, uh, I can just leave this for now. I, class F A S, F A S, F A, oh, sorry. F A dash URL, the URL there? Uh, link maybe? Okay, just link only. And then I'm gonna wrap it up with, um, ATAC. I could link. Okay? Uh, let's close that as well, and then put them right over here. And then all I have to do, just wrap this guy. Put them right inside, and then you can call this URL, and then make sure you are putting the target blank. Okay, and then I think that'll do it. Refresh. If not, we can just grab it from, uh, world somewhere. Okay, so there we go. And da, 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 da. We'll fix this, uh, author as well. For some reason, author is just something is going on with author. We'll both fix that. Okay, so let's say if I wanna go to, uh, BBC, talking about Iraq. Let's click on that one, and that should open up. Uh, there we go. Iraq arranged by Trump idea to watch Iran from base, and that is match exactly the title. Okay? So now you can look for something else. Um, let, let's say I'm looking for England. See if it's gonna find England. There's nothing there. How about we search for New York? Obviously, New York is right here. Now. I will increase the limit, so now I can take that limit off. I can put the hundred. Does that make sense? Boom. If there's a, uh, lot more, then you can see a lot more. That's it. Okay, then the rest is up to you, whatever you wanna do. Uh, then later on, and in our future classes, I can help you uh, teach you how to make it sortable. You can say, hey, I wanna sort it by source, maybe author, maybe title. I wanna go ascended, I wanna go descended, and so on, so on. Okay, so this is just a basically one, uh, under one hour, a little over one hour, kind of a, uh, time. So anyone should be able built uh, any simple interface connecting to database. Uh, obviously, you have to focus on the security, number one, because you don't wanna be hacked. So, and then everything else come, uh, later. Okay, now, so let's add some, uh, design a little bit here, so that looks nice. Because eventually, uh, we wanna look good to other people, right? So say we can say TR. Let's see, we can go. Maybe we can go to TD. Maybe we can go to CD. Uh, and. Yeah, I wanna do TD, I wanna do TR, let's try that. So even numbers, like we just even. I wanna background color. I want something like. This. Okay, so it might be too dark, uh, so we can adjust that just a little bit. Okay? Now, as you can see, the image is fine, but I think I feel like. We can make the source, which is this one, uh, a little bit better, so let me see if I can change that as well. Uh, source name, as you can see, source name. So let's go ahead and add the X class, uh, we'll just call this source name, right? Uh, so that's easy for us with the class. Now you're gonna come back, say dot. Um. Let's go to font weight, I'm gonna add the holder. Uh, let's set a color, some like uh. Something like that. And. On family. I don't know, uh, she will make it like Ariel Black or Courier, Microsoft, uh, you know what, Verdana, I haven't used it for a while. And then boom. So now you should see uh, things are changing, okay? So. Color, alright, now, another thing that I'm gonna go ahead and add that is, let's go TR, I'm gonna go hover. And then same thing, I just wanna copy this guy. And uh, let's add something nice. I wanna put the cursor pointer. So when you do that, you can probably see things are changing, but it's too dark, uh, so I don't want to dark, so I'm gonna go light, 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 light. Something like very. Slightly noticeable, right? Something like that, so that way. Uh, that thing is not gonna take up your entire. There we go, attention. Okay, uh, any questions, any suggestions, anything that you guys learned today? I guess.
Rajanaki, I'm the question, pardon?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Shono table, the machine, or he's a guy?
Ah, sure. Yes, go ahead.
Shouldn't matter, share, or in, do the man, who, 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 the guy? Uh, database, yeah.
Ah, ah, hold, hold, hold. Yep.
World news, man, I'm.
Yes, world news. Uh, you guys all should have it. Uh, if you go to the DBQ. Then you should be able to create something like this, make a nice. You can come up with, with anything you want. And then later on, I'll, I'll teach you guys how to do the pagination, but not now, that's for some other time. Now. You should be able. Yeah, the opportunities in front of you now just kind of got uh, widened a little bit, no, that means now you should be able to. Uh, not only the selecting, but now updating, deleting, you can create a comment section, you can create a blog, you can create a um. Pretty much a lot of thing now. So you guys are big boys now, okay? And big girls. Not literally, but as far as power wise. Okay, so anything else? Girls, any uh, suggestions, any questions, anybody? No? Okay, um, that should wrap up our today's session. Um, I really appreciate everyone joining. I know. Things are going kind of a, coming down now. Uh, looks like I heard some good news coming from uh, CDC and other places. The social distancing uh, and staying home uh, actually is helping. Uh, reduce this number of uh, people get infected. So um, they said that i- it usually gets worse before it gets better. It looks like we hit the rock bottom, and the only thing we can hope for is now, it's just nice weather, and then hopefully people get back outside and start exercising and start having a. Healthy lifestyle. Uh, I pray for everyone, uh, stay safe. God bless every one of you guys. God bless the United States of America, and God bless Pakistan. I'll see you guys in next class. Stay tuned for more uh, updates and any questions, please do not hesitate. Uh, reach out to me, and if I have time, obviously, I will help you guys out, okay? In the meantime. And uh, stay safe, all right, guys? See you later.
My name is Rama.